Okay, so we're going to call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the-- So, I guess immediately we'll hand this over to Don for the proposed school budget. 2016-2017 school district budget vehicle bonding proposition as well as a Salina library proposition.
Good evening. Tonight, we're going to review our 2016-17 budget. Our agenda includes revenues, expenses, staff changes, and other considerations. We'll talk about our vehicle bonding proposition as well as the financial condition of the district by speaking about fund balance and reserves. And then we'll finish with our vote and election information and the final items on our budget process timeline. Our budget for 1617 is a $155.2 million budget. The majority of our revenues comes from two sources. Our tax levy, which represents 53% of the budget revenues, and our state aid, which represents 44%. Together, they represent 97% of the district's revenues. This chart shows comparison of last year's budget to this year's budget. It's important to note, we did have a large increase in our general state aid of about 6%, which was great. That was due primarily to the elimination of this, the GEA, the gap elimination adjustment, which this year reduced our aid by almost $2 million. So that was the largest increase. We also received an increase in foundation aid. I'll talk more about that in a moment. The other large increase in revenues is our possible tax levy, subject to voter approval of this budget, of $890,000. That's a 1.09% increase. The largest component of our state aid is foundation aid. In 2006, there was a lawsuit, the Campaign for Fiscal Equity Lawsuit, that was brought by Public Education, Public Schools against the state of New York to ensure that schools would have enough funds to provide a sound, basic education. The schools won the lawsuit, and the courts ruled that New York State would have to fund schools properly. And that phase-in was to happen between 2007-8 and the 11-12 school year, over a five-year period. Unfortunately, due to the downturn in the economy, the funding was never fully phased in. I just want to point out that in the 15-16 school year, North Syracuse received almost $9.4 million less in foundation aid than was required by the court ruling in 2006. So, foundation aid is a significant issue for our district and something that we'll be talking more about in the coming budgets. Tax cap this year, this is the state mandated formula that's been filed with the New York State Comptroller's Office. In accordance with this formula, the tax levy at the cap is 1.09% increase, or about $890,000. That's an increase on a $100,000 home of about $25 a year before STAR. This shows the tax increase or the tax rate by school district or by town within our school district. It's important to note, we have three towns within our district, Cicero, Clay, and Salina. The town of Clay is a partial value-assessed town, and therefore their rate of $545.55 is higher than the other towns, but note, it's due to their low assessed value. A $100,000 home in the town of Clay is assessed at $4,310. But everybody should rest assured that all three towns for homes with a full value of $100,000 would pay the same $2,351 in school taxes. Again, a $25 increase before the benefits of STAR. Again, just to finally restate that our tax levy proposal is 1.09%. It requires a simple majority, one more yes vote than no vote, and it's within the cap. Shifting to expenditures, North Syracuse, like all other school districts in New York State, we're a people-based business. The most important thing we do is put teachers in front of students, and therefore the majority of our cost is people cost. 77%, the green and the blue pie there, represent the cost of our people. We also spend about $10.5 million on debt service. That's like the district's mortgage payment, that represents about 7% of the budget. We have about $14 million in expenditures associated with BOCs. That's for our special ed programs, our regional information center, and a variety of other programs that we cooperate with other school districts in our area so that we can save costs, achieve economies of scale, and provide services to our students and staff that we would otherwise not be able to. Moving into the detail, comparing the budgets for 1516 for expenditures, you'll note that our salaries expense appears to be going up 3.9%. I want to just remind everybody that in the 1516 school year, we were negotiating contracts. So, the actual budgeted salary was lower than the amount of the increases that we settled on with our bargaining units. Our employees did not get a 4.39% raise this year. That is the combination of part of last year's increase and the full 3% increase that they received for the 1617 school year. Our benefits, I'll talk more about some of these items in a moment. Let me cover some staffing changes that affect our salaries. This year, we have four teaching assistants retiring, and we've chosen not to replace those teaching assistants, but we're adding two additional special education teachers. This is the result of a special ed study that was done by a committee to look at moving students, special needs students back to their home schools, and the staffing is adjusted accordingly. At the secondary level, that's Gillette Road Middle School, Roxboro Road Middle School, the junior high and the high school. The population or the enrollment there requires that we increase our teaching staffing by .8 teachers. We're also adding an additional social worker. The district's been talking for a number of years about the need to expand social worker staffing. And at the high school now, we have a .6 social worker. This will allow us to have a full-time social worker at the high school as well as provide additional social services to students throughout the district. At the elementary level, enrollment's down. Therefore, we have two positions that are being reduced at the elementary level, teaching positions, as well as .8 teaching positions that cover the special areas of art, music, and physical education. Then finally, we're adding two consultant teachers. These are the teachers that coach and work with our newest teachers in terms of improving their performance and working with them through their tenure period, the new tenure being four years. We have two consultant teachers on staff currently. This allows us to comply with our NSCA agreement with our teachers. And staffing changes net, a one FTE reduction in staffing, and about a $22,000 increase in compensation related to those changes. Some other considerations that are important to note. We have two teachers currently on special assignment, working with instructional technology. They work with our teachers in implementing technology in the classroom. And we'll continue with that next year if that is in our budget. We're also going to continue, we have one teacher on special assignment, working, coaching teachers on writing and how to teach writing to our students, and that's going to continue next year. Our budget does not contemplate any layoffs, and there are no reductions in student programs. I think the disappointment in this budget, as I talked about state aid and foundation aid specifically, we didn't receive enough state aid to restore some of the programs that have been cut in the last several years. And that's disappointing, and we're very hopeful in the future we'll get more state aid and be able to do that. But we've made cuts in instructional programs, support services, administration, co-curricular, and athletic programs that, again, we hope to be able to restore in the future. So, kind of to summarize our expenditures, health benefits, a big cost for any organization. The district in October moved our health insurance to a new third-party administrator with what we think is a more cost-effective and a better network. We've anticipated $1 million of cost avoidance as a result of that move. That's been factored into the budget. Thankfully, the stock market continues to do well. Therefore, our TRS, that's our teacher retirement system, and our ERS, employee retirement system, costs are down, and they've been factored into the budget. I already commented on salaries and wages. Fortunately, with fuel costs being down and energy costs being down, we've been able to factor savings in the budget for those. And we continue to evaluate opportunities to work with BOCs to control costs as well as provide additional services to our students and staff. This chart, we show every year. It highlights expenditures per pupil. And simply stated, expenditures per pupil is our total revenues divided by our number of pupils. North Syracuse is ranked second to last in our BOCs. There are 23 component school districts in the OCM BOCs. North Syracuse is ranked 22nd in terms of spending per pupil. We're also ranked 652nd out of 669 districts in the state. So, in one regard, we're efficient in terms of our spending. In another regard, this is really a symptom of years of the gap elimination adjustment and not having the foundation aid. So, you know, this is something that, it wouldn't be a bad thing if North Syracuse moved up in that ranking at some point in the future. Vehicle bonding proposition. Every year, we buy vehicles. This year's no different. We have a large fleet, and it's critical that we maintain a fleet where we don't have many vehicles over 10 years old. When a vehicle gets over 10 years old, we have issues with rust and DOT inspections and the reliability of that vehicle. Therefore, each year, we've been buying 10 large, 65-passenger buses. We're buying a couple of special needs buses this year, as well as a suburban. In addition, we're buying a bucket loader for grounds projects as well as snow removal. This will replace quite an old piece of equipment we've had that has had unusually high repair and maintenance costs. It's reached its useful life. So, the estimated cost to these 14 vehicles is about $1.5 million. And the tax impact after transportation aid is about $2.10 on a house assessed at $100,000, again, before STAR. So, it would be fiscally irresponsible for us not to take advantage of this aid and to keep our fleet current, particularly considering the complicated logistics of the North Syracuse fleet. We are one of the few districts around that triple-trip our kids. The fleet goes out and picks up high school and junior high students, then goes and picks up middle school students, and then goes and does the elementary run. So, the implications on the fleet of having buses that are regularly out of service would be disruptive to the educational process, not to mention costly. I show this slide about our fund balance to talk about the district's financial position. New York State has a target of 4%. Ideally, we'd have a 4% savings or fund balance as a percentage of our budget. Our fund balance this year is 3.65%, which has improved over the last several years, but, you know, slightly lower than what we'd like to see it. This year, we are taking in some additional money out of fund balance to support the budget. Last year, if you see that line in the center there called appropriation to reduce tax levy 2016-17 of $950,000, we used $750,000 last year to subsidize the 1516 budget. We're going to use $950,000 to subsidize the 1617 budget. And we're doing that in order to balance the budget and in recognition of the fact that we just didn't get as much state aid as we expected. Our reserves, another measure of the district's financial condition, continue to be low, albeit slightly improved. We will continue to pay attention to reserves to make sure that critical liabilities are reserved for in hopes that we can shore these up in the future. But, again, we've made progress in the short term, and we certainly are cognizant of when we put money in reserves and fund balance, it takes away from programs, and so we have to strike that balance. So, in summary, our budget for 1617 includes an increase of $3.2 million in state aid, or about 4.9% overall. That's the general aid as well as the aid for building projects. Although, we were thrilled that the GEA was eliminated, we are disappointed with our foundation aid, and there's a lot of work to be done there to encourage Albany to fully fund education consistently with the Campaign for Fiscal Equity lawsuit. Our proposed tax levy of 1.09% is at the cap, requires a simple majority. If approved, the taxpayers in our district will get the rebate that's getting with a tax levy within the cap. The budget includes expenditures of $155.2 million, which increased by 2.9%. The disappointment, I think, with our budget this year is that we did not get enough aid to restore some of the programs that have been cut. We're hopeful that we'll be able to do that in the future. But we are thankful that there are no layoffs required or reductions in student programs to balance the budget. And as I mentioned moments ago, our financial position continues to improve, albeit slowly. The vote is two weeks from today. It'll be at Cicero Elementary School and here at the district office from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. We had a special registration event today at both Cicero L. and here at the district office, which will continue until 8:00. District residents can register with our district clerk through Thursday, May 12th. And if anybody has any questions, I would encourage them to contact Connie Gibson, our district clerk, and she can answer any questions regarding registration or absentee ballots. My presentation.
Okay, so, that brings us to questions or comments from the audience. Yes, if you could just please use the microphone.
Last night, you had a tax resolution for a taxer stories case. Why are we spending $2,500 on that case?
Does that pertain--
They're suing the town over the assessment. Why are we getting involved?
Well, because our school taxes, you know, are affected by those assessments. You're right, we don't deal with assessments, but we have skin in the game in terms of how that's resolved. And so, sometimes, we have to have our attorneys advocate on our behalf on those matters.
Which, that speaks to the fact that we have the tertiary reserve in our budget, but that actually does not pertain specifically to this budget. So, if you have questions pertaining specifically to next year's budget, that's the--
Well, what budget is it in?
Well, that actually is going to affect this year's budget. If, and I will say this, we've authorized our attorneys to spend that money. If it's spent, it'll come out of the 1516 budget this year. But they may not have to. They're in negotiations. They just wanted to make sure that they could have the ability to spend that money if it was needed.
Is the town of Salina's library, they're going to lose money, have to pay back money, aren't they, and the county? I mean, everybody who has a tax bill, right? Do they have lawyers?
Town and school district. And yes, of course, they have attorneys that are working on it. I can, if, I can, you know, speak to you individually about tax tertiary matters if you'd like. We're well-represented, and we have a really good handle on those matters, albeit we don't have an impact on assessments. We just are, you know, have skin in the game because it affects our levy.
Well, they're finally at against one town. So, why has everybody got to have a lawyer? The town is the one that has to provide the lawyer. That's a duplication of effort.
With all due respect, that has nothing to do--
Is there anything in the budget for taxer stories, legal expenses?
The reserve, so two places. You saw that we have a reserve for the tax tertiary matters. And so, what we do every year is we work with our attorneys, and they look at all of the different cases that are pending. And we true-up that reserve. We say, geez, do we have enough money to cover potential liabilities? And so, that was the slide I showed about reserves. And then, in our legal fees, we have some amount of money budgeted for general legal matters, which would include tax tertiary matters where they represent us.
matters, which would include taxer jury matters, where they represent us.
But some of those specific matters are legal matters that are executive session discussion only.
No, taxer juries cases are not.
When, when they become-
It's public information when they file that in-
They're public information-
When they become settled-
When they're settled.
No, when they file, it's public information.
When we speak about what's being negotiated, this is not the appropriate venue to answer those questions.
We're not negotiating here.
We are.
That's, that's, the question that you asked was pertaining to a negotiation item. Yeah. That's why I'm asking, basically asking you to discuss that privately or wait until the matter's resolved. That's all I'm asking you to do, Janie. I'm asking you very respectfully to just honor the fact that we have constraints within New York State education law. And you're asking us to step outside of that.
It's been made public, it's in the agenda. Talking about what is in the agenda that's been made public.
You're asking about-
Janie, you're referring to something that was on last night's board meeting that we are not able to discuss-
But it's in, it's in the budget.
Please don't interrupt me. Taxer juries are in the budget. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to talk about the '16-'17 school budget and to ask community members if they have any questions related to that. So, do you have any other specific questions related to the budget presentation?
For next year.
Why are we buying a Suburban van?
The, the Suburbans we have are 2007s. And so, what, what we do is, I don't know if you know, we, we will, whenever we take a small trip, if we take a, a small team or small group of students to Albany, it's a lot cheaper for us to have an authorized district employee drive the vehicle. And maybe they'll stay overnight if it's a, if it's a basketball tournament or if it's some other event where they need to go, as opposed to driving a full-size bus.
What, what purpose, is that the only purpose it serves?
No, so, that's, that's, that's the, the primary purpose of the Suburbans is to, to transport students in those cases. Our transportation director and our mechanics crew, they use those vehicles. So, on a snow day, for example, Matt Conti would drive around the district at 4:00 in the morning and assess road conditions. Matt also is out driving around when we have parents concerned about bus stops, bus stop safety. So, Matt uses that vehicle to travel the district. If we have a bus breakdown or an accident, the dispatcher or Matt would use that vehicle to travel out to the accident. As I mentioned, we, they get pretty utilized. We use them for coaches and for teachers that are taking trips with students, teachers that might be going to training. It's, it's kind of the, the school vehicle that gets signed out when we need to transport people.
Originally, we brought that to transport a single, handicapped child to Rome. And we got the full state aid for that. You're not getting state aid if you're not using it for transporting students.
No, we still get, oh, we still get state aid on that vehicle. It's a transportation vehicle. And it does transport students. And you bring out a good point. We'll often, we'll get the call that a student has missed the bus or something's happened where that student needs to be picked up and transported. And yes, we use that student for, that, that vehicle for driveway-to-driveway transportation. You'll notice that our vehicles don't have flashers. They're not set up to run like a regular bus route, but they can pull into a driveway, pick up a student, and then transport them to an educational site. And we, we do use them for that purpose.
But, didn't we, instance that she's talking about with a student that was going-
Yes, we do that a lot. We'll share services with other districts. We also had a contract recently with Bernie Bus Service to transport. We've tried a lot of different strategies. And you know, the, the nature of our special needs population changes, they need to go to a lot, you'd be surprised the number of locations that they have to go to. And so, the transportation is just one strategy, or, I'm sorry, the Suburban's just one source of transportation in transporting our students.
But, when Don talks about the cost savings associated with traveling to, like Albany, say, contractual obligations to our maintenance and operations or transportation department, rather, require us to pay them, you know, a certain dollar amount. If we have a coach that's going to be going anyways, we save not only the, the cost of, of the transportation of a 65-passenger vehicle going, gas mileage is much, much more expensive bus than the Suburban is, as well as the pupil cost associated with having that driver sitting. You know, they're getting paid basically to sit.
How many passengers fit in that Suburban?
Well, technically, it's an eight-passenger vehicle, including the driver. As a general rule, you'd take seven passengers and, including the driver, i- is a maximum. But, you know, we'll have that thing where that one track student or two track students makes the state tournament and he needs to go. The track coach drives those one or two students. That, that, that's often, or, or a day trip, field trip that takes place. And although we don't pay for field trips, often there's PTO, PTG, club-sponsored type events where they use those.
About the large 66-passenger buses, why are we still-
65s, yeah.
Why are we still ordering 10 buses?
Well, the size of our fleet is such that we, we try to buy 10 and retire 10 every year. And, and the other thing about that is that, at that point, after they're 10 years old, powertrain warranties, engine warranties have gone out, the cost to repair them is expensive. One thing we have done, though, that's helped is we don't use our buses as trade-ins anymore. We sell them, auction them off, and we've been able to get some additional money in doing that. But we, in order to keep the fleet, so we don't have many 10-year-old buses, we just need to buy 10 a year. It's just the nature of our fleet.
Oh, we have about 85 large passenger buses on the road. 10% of that is only 8.5%.
Yeah, well, we, I think, I think we actually have, you know, I think we have more than 85 large passengers, large passenger buses, last time I looked, but I'd have to go back and check. But if it's only 8.5, we're buying 10 a year. That's been our plan. And I know, even after we buy these 10, we'll still have some that are over 10 years old running.
But our enrollment has declined by 1,200 students.
Yeah, but if you look at all the housing developments that have been built and the mileage traveled by our fleet, the mileage hasn't, hasn't declined. And the other thing that's interesting about North Syracuse, we have a very high ridership because of Route 11, Taft Road, you know, all of the major roads that run through our district. We just don't have the walker population that a lot of districts have. And one thing I do, I'm kind of proud of, I go, I go and I watch the buses arrive at the schools several times a year. And I'm always shocked by how packed they are. I mean, these are, we're not driving a lot of empty buses around. If anybody sees empty buses-
They're about 75% full at the elementary level.
Excuse me?
They're about 75% full at the elementary level. You're supposed to be putting 66 kids on a bus at the elementary level.
There's, there's 65 passenger buses. There's only seat belts for 65 students. So, you do not put, even though the students may not use the seat belts, you do not, there, there are capacity ratings for standing, which doesn't apply to-
The interesting thing, though, I, I'll tell you, I, I've challenged a lot of this stuff since I've been here. And one of the things we have to measure, too, is not only capacity of the bus, but transit time. Kids have to get to school on time. So, those longer runs, when we're running out into the country, you're going to get a little lower load on the bus, a little bit lower. But I, I think of a full bus. If I got a 66-passenger bus and there's 55 kids on there, I'm thinking, that's a pretty full bus. Might not be chalk, you know, filled to the max. But if we try to fill every bus up to 66 kids, we'll never get the kids, the kids to school on time. Because you have to, that's that trade-off of how much can that bus travel and, and collect kids and get there on time. And as I mentioned, we triple-trip our kids. So, it's a pretty well-oiled machine. It's a complicated logistical operation to pick up, you know, the number of kids we pick up.
I guess my question is, where are you getting that 75% figure? Because I personally have never heard-
From the Director of Transportation.
I, now, is he going off of the fact that I, you know, I have kids that I drive to school? I know that there are several kids that get, that get driven to school.
No, he told me how many buses went to each school.
That, what does that answer?
By their, by the number of kids in the school.
Well, what, what other questions-
It doesn't even take into account the smaller buses.
What other questions do you have, Janie? We've, I just, I just wanted to say on the transportation, that we've been doing this replacement program for a lot of years and it is really-
Yeah, but your enrollment declined and you didn't change it. That's my point. You should be getting nine buses now. We should have been getting nine buses for the past five years.
Is that why you've been asking that question for the past five years?
Hmm?
Is that why you've been asking that same question for the past five years?
We need to do at least 10 every year because even with doing that, we still have buses that are over 10 years old. And I noticed that every, every year, you have particular questions related to buses, which is fine. And we're going to do the same thing that we did last year and ask you to make an appointment and go meet with Mr. Keegan to have those specific questions answered. Are there other people in the audience that have any questions?
Don, during your presentation, you noted that we use some amount of reserves to basically defray the larger costs of our budget. Could you comment on the need to do that over time in relationship to the change in funding levels between local tax levy and state aid?
Yeah, that's a good, very good question. I mean, school districts have become more and more dependent on their savings. And, and we've been kind of in a pickle because we haven't had the savings. But, you know, as we have to live under the tax cap, as state aid's been tight, we've been challenged to, to look at our fund balance as a source of, of funding. We've really tried, we went through a cycle where we increased our fund balance utilization as, when the budget was really tight. We spent it down about as low as we felt comfortable. We got it down. I think one year, we did 700, we did 750, we're back up to 950 because we just didn't get the state aid that we, that we expected this year. It's, it's, it's my hope that we don't use much more than 950 any, in any given year. We'll just have to watch how the state aid develops over the next couple of years. But it's, it's something we have to really watch closely.
Uh, 1980, Budget Subcommittee recommended that we hire a purchasing agent because they would be able to save enough money to justify their salary. Since that time, we have, uh, put, a lot of the supplies that you purchase for schools now are going to, are on the state contract. We're going to BOSEs for our technological equipment. Why do we need a purchasing agent?
It's a great, it's a great question. And so, one of the things that, with, within Dave's title, this individual's title as purchasing agent, he purchases, we have him now purchasing our healthcare, our property casualty insurance. So, we've kind of given him more things to purchase than he's purchased in the past. And he also wears a couple other hats. He, he's the building safety coordinator here. And so, we've really, as, as we've cut administrative positions, we've asked everybody to do more. We're very sensitive of civil service titles and, and responsibilities within bargaining units. But Dave has really, this individual has really stepped up to the plate and taken on more responsibility. He also does coordinate. We had him at a regional purchasing event and working with the folks at BOSEs, talking about purchasing opportunities. And, and we do leverage as best we can the various purchasing that BOSEs does, cooperative bidding and whatnot. But you still have to remember, we're a huge organization in terms of the amount of purchasing that we do. You know, if you think of North Syracuse being the largest district in our BOSEs, we're still buying stuff for 10 schools, not to mention a transportation operation, you know. And so, it's a, it's a large undertaking and so we still need a, a purchasing person. And Dave, I will tell you, this individual saved us his salary and that continues to happen. And, and I think it was validated recently in a, in a recent meeting with BOSEs, my counterparts in BOSEs. We're just able to dot the i's, cross the t's, and look at other, you know, purchasing opportunities a little closer, look at, you know, bidding and, and, and quotes. And we, we, we squeeze things pretty tightly. And I, so I think the position is still warranted.
But it's, like Don said, there are many hats that the same person wears as well. At the business office over the past few years, as I'm sure that you're aware from watching the budget, that has actually taken a hit in the number of people that are in that office. We've had retirements-
There's nothing for education. Should be at as low as we can possibly get. It has nothing to do with education.
Well, it does in the sense that if Dave saves us money, it allows us to deploy those limited resources toward staff, supplies, equipment, and other things for the educational process.
As, as well as compliance issues with state aid. You know, when, when Don talks about dotting i's and crossing t's, that is, those are times where we could lose funding or not get the reimbursement that we need, or possibly overpay, so on and so forth. There are so many reasons for me to explain that to you.
If you're going to the state contract, anybody can do that.
Janie, could, could I ask you to please, when we answer your question, not to talk over us, okay?
I'd like to add one other piece. In Don's budget presentation, he did talk about the fact that this year, we switched over to a different third-party administrator for our health insurance, saving us, which we believe is cost avoidance of a million dollars. Our purchasing agent is the one that spent an incredible amount of time with that change this year and other changes to do with health insurance. Is there anybody else that has any questions?
Don, during your recent comments, you, you talked a little bit about the purpose of having a purchasing agent and how actually that saved us a tremendous amount of money over time. Over the last five years, we've certainly experienced a reduction in, in our staff, in our teaching staff, which has been very painful. But could you comment as a percentage what reductions have been made in this building to help keep as many positions in the field full as possible?
Yeah, and it, it goes across the different bargaining units. I mean, we've, we've cut anywhere from 16 to 25% of the staff, if you think about it, by bargaining unit, over the last five or six years. It's been a huge cut. It, it is in excess of our enrollment decline. I think our enrollment decline is about 12% over the last seven years. And so, 16 to 25% is, is far in excess of that. So, we've had to achieve a lot of efficiencies by using technology. We've asked a lot of people to step up to the plate. The purchasing manager is just one who's assumed additional responsibilities. There's been a lot of cooperation by a lot of people, working together to do more with less as best we can.
But, you know, I think you're kind of asking about, like, a technology director was cut that we have made in this building.
Safety director.
Safety director was cut, that position was in this building, as well as the assistant and assistant to special education, which was a- Place, but-
Director of Business Operations. We cut our food service director position down to 80%.
Right. So, I mean, we, even some of the positions weren't cut in a full-time status, but reduced by 20% or so on and so forth. So, there have been, you know, I guess, several, several cuts, several administrative cuts as well as, you know, we know that in our building level positions, our, our deans have been reduced. We have reduced building principals overall the past five years.
We didn't show that chart this time. And, and we didn't think about it because fortunately, we weren't in a position to have to make additional cuts this year. But we could, you know, put that online as a reminder. And without having the chart memorized, I believe that the cuts across this building and administration in general were the highest and they were around 25%.
Now, we have people from Salinas Free Library, correct? Do we have any questions?
Other questions are... Certainly welcome people to give us a call here at the district office if they've got any questions on the budget. Happy to sit down with you and spend time going through information.
Connie and Don have been, you know, very good about responding to people. Don has been very patient and take the time to sit down. He sat down with Janie in the past to answer some of the same questions that she asked tonight. So, I'll move into the introduction of some of the board candidates. Ms. Scanlon is seeking reelection. She is here tonight. Can stand. Ms. Owens, who I guess we can say is also seeking reelection after a short, you know, sabbatical from her board. She was previously a nine-year sitting board member. I'd like to call Farfalia and Mr. Leon for, Dr. Leon for being here tonight as well. Mr. Shusta is, he's finishing Mrs. Sepharatus' term and is seeking election this year as well. And Sharon Hartle, who tonight is also seeking four candidates for three at-large positions. Okay, and then, I guess, 7:42, the meeting is adjourned.